Regular meeting number 28 will now come to order. Will you please stand for the playing of the National Anthem?
who is the Senior Pastor of Bethany Baptist Church. Pastor, thank you for being with us and praying over this meeting.
Shall we pray? Our Father, O God, we come to say thank you. Thank you for this beautiful day that you have made. It's good and very good. Now, Father, we thank you for this City Council meeting, and we want to invite you into this meeting, that you will come and fill the atmosphere. We pray that love, peace, and joy will fill this place, Father. Thank you for President Harding and his staff. We ask you to please give them knowledge and wisdom to be able to make decisions tonight that will bless the community and this city. Now, God, we ask you to remember those families that was gunned down in Santa Fe, Texas. We ask you to have mercy on them and comfort the family with only a comfort that you can give. Now, God, we just invite you to come and let your will be done. All these blessings we ask in your precious Son's name. Let everyone say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harding. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters these areas of City Council, chambers reserved for city officials, or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harding.
This week's communications received by the city's clerks are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there resolutions from members of council? Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Yes. Wait, I'm sorry. No. I do not have any resolutions. Mommy brain.
You're fine. We'll come back. Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, Council President. I do have one resolution this evening. I would first like to ask Fire Chief O'Connor and Dr. Cortez and any members of the Division of Fire to please approach the podium. Resolution 0154X2018, to declare the week of May 20 through the 25th, 2018 to be Emergency Medical Services Week in Columbus, Ohio. Whereas, emergency medical service providers perform a vital public service with over 1,500 members of the Columbus Division of Fire, providing life-saving care to those that need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas, the members of the Columbus Division of Fire are highly trained paramedics that have the most current training and state-of-the-art equipment, so that they can manage any emergency medical situation that may occur. And whereas, the emergency medical service system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators. And whereas, the Columbus Division of Fire and other emergency personnel will be hosting several events this week to promote the importance of CPR training. And whereas, it is important to recognize the value and accomplishments and sacrifices and selfless contributions of emergency medical services providers, by designating Emergency Medical Services Week now and therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby declare the week of May 20 through the 25th, 2018, to be Emergency Medical Services Week, and to express its gratitude to all members of the Columbus Division of Fire for their outstanding contributions and to the safety and well-being of the citizens of Columbus. I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harding.
Adopt it.
At this particular time, I'm going to turn the podium over to Chief O'Connor.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, Council President Harding, all council members. On behalf of the 1,560 members of the Columbus Division of Fire, I want to thank you for your recognition of EMS Week. What EMS Week is for us is the fact is, the Columbus Division of Fire probably has the wrong name. Since the '70s, we've been involved in EMS to a greater extent than we already have in Fire. On any given day, we'll make over 500 responses to the citizens of Columbus, and of those, about 85% revolve emergency medical care. We are in the medical care business. Every day, we are in people's homes in their worst hours. What you're doing today by proclaiming this EMS Week is telling us, "Thank you for the job we do," and we want to say thank you in return. You give us the resources. What you see back here is two of our companies from the downtown stations, and they represent a conglomeration of all 1,560 people. Every one of these people back here gives themselves selfishly to the Division, to the citizens, on a daily basis. They do that 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, without regards to anything. They don't care what your race is when they go to your house. They don't care how much money you make. They don't care what your house looks like. They know that on your darkest hour, we're there to help. And that's what we want to be, and that's what the Division of Fire wants to represent. Now, one of the things, by you proclaiming this, gives us the opportunity to expand EMS education in Columbus during this week. So yesterday, at COSI, we had a major event with safety. People were able to come down, they were able to do CPR, they were able to see the trucks, get hands-on. They were doing EMS Week also involves, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we're going to be doing training for new Americans. We're going to be doing up on Carl Road and on Mount Vernon Avenue, we're going to be teaching CPR to new Americans. We're going to be at Champion Middle School on Thursday, or Wednesday, we're going to be teaching it to the students. On Friday, we're going to be in the Plaza at Nationwide Arena, doing CPR, hands-only CPR, to show people that it only takes about one minute to learn CPR and to be able to save a life in citizens of Columbus. Because the reality is, is this is a community, and it takes a community to save a community. So we need everybody in Columbus to help us, help each other. That's what neighbors do, that's what we do every day, and I want to thank you for your recognition. I would like, if it's okay, to pass this on to Dr. Cortez. He's our Assistant Medical Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, President Harding, and other members of council. We really appreciate you hosting us here tonight. I'd like to share a quick story about a recent patient encounter. The patient, the citizen, was having a life-threatening emergency, and we were able to get that patient to definitive care within 35 minutes of calling 911. Our dispatch office, they were able to recognize the emergency and get resources to the patient, and provided life-saving instructions over the telephone. Our EMS providers, they arrived on scene quickly, recognized the life-threatening emergency, provided life stabilization treatment en route to the hospital, and the patient ultimately had a great outcome. Those kind of runs happen hundreds of times a day, and it makes me proud to be associated with the Division of Fire. We wouldn't have those types of runs in the quality of our care that we provided to the citizens without our amazing EMS providers that are standing behind me, without the support of Chief O'Connor and Fire Administration, other city leaders, and of course, City Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments from my councilman colleagues, Council President Tyson?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, the Chief O'Connor, and the EMS team that's standing behind you, and of course, and to the ones that are not here today. I just want to say thank you. I've had the opportunity to ride with some of the EMS, with some of the fire apparatus, and to go into individuals' homes, and to be able to see firsthand what our EMS professionals do in terms of helping our community is pretty extraordinary. And so, I just want to say thank you for your service to our community. Certainly, you're a group of people who we really never want to see, but we're glad that when we need you, you're there. And I really did enjoy my time riding and just seeing the great work that you do. So thank you so much.
Chief, if I may, we have a variety of firefighters who are here. Very briefly, with each one, you're starting on the far left, let's say your name and the station you're associated with, please.
Firefighter Chris Osso, Station Dan.
Paul Benner, with the EMS Office.
Firefighter Matt Harrison, Station.
Firefighter Matt Farah, Station.
We could have been number 35.
Firefighter Jordan, with the EMS Office.
Firefighter Aaronson, Station 10.
Firefighter Allison, Station.
Firefighter Allison, Station.
Ladies and gentlemen, these are our finest. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. We'll go back to Councilmember Elizabeth Brown.
Thank you, President Harding. What I meant to do was actually say, "I do not have a resolution," but I would like to request your permission to jump ahead to page 15 and introduce an ordinance in Recreation and Parks Committee.
Please.
Great. So could our friends from the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium, please, come up? We have ordinance 1212-2018 to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with the Columbus Zoological Park Association to provide transportation shirts and novelties for children from the Recreation and Parks Playground Program to the Columbus Zoo and Aquarium as a part of the Melvin B. Dodge Summer Zoo Days. It is a yearly tradition for us to welcome some special guests to City Hall as we renew -- and there are even more here than we realized in the hallway -- as we renew this partnership between Recreation and Parks and the zoo. I really thank your team for coming down, your friends, your furry friends. I was learning about how personable the penguin is, which is not standard for penguins, and that he happens to be perfectly suited for a stroll at City Hall. So, Summer Zoo Days are an exciting opportunity for 2,400 children in the playground program across 30 playgrounds throughout Columbus to experience the zoo free of charge. Director Collins, I know this is a really fun program to talk about. If you have anything more you'd want to share, I'd like to do that before turning it over to Tom Staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, members of council. We'd just like to thank the Tom and the zoo team for everything they do for the Recreation and Parks Program, and the partnership has been longstanding. We'll be able to send over 2,400 kids out to the zoo this summer to experience the animals firsthand, and it's a big part of our summer program, and we can't say enough for all the things the zoo does, not just with summer, but also to bring animals to our sites for our summer food service program, to help encourage kids to come out to our summer food sites throughout the city, as well as even helping us with our summer play initiative just recently. So the zoo's a great partner, and we really appreciate everything that they do.
Great. Thank you so much, Director Collins, and Mr. Staff.
Thank you, President Harding, and all council members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to welcome some of our new guests here. I am holding a clouded leopard, a brand-new to the zoo, and unfortunately, a highly endangered animal that would be found in Southeast Asia. You know, our motto and our mission at the Columbus Zoo is very simple: Lead and Inspire by Connecting People and Wildlife. We do that every single day for everyone. Calvin is holding a very special animal for us. It's a palm civet. Toddy is 18 years old and has been with us for the whole 18 years, and inspiring people to learn more about palm civets. And my great friend Tiffany is holding a red kangaroo. Kangaroos are only found in Australia, and if you wouldn't mind, they would love to come a little closer to you as I speak a little bit about Mel Dodge. You know, the Columbus Zoo has been such an icon for the city of Columbus since 1927. But because of Mel Dodge and the leadership with Recreation and Parks, it really launched the Columbus Zoo to what it is today. We are attracting over 2 million guests every single year to learn about wildlife and wild places. But I think that what is so important is partnerships. I can tell you right now, our partnership with Mr. Collins and Recreation and Park is so valuable for our community. This year, or last year, we had 2,400 students that came to a community center and then had an opportunity to go to the zoo, free of charge, get a great meal, get an awesome backpack, get a free ride, and they had fun. Who knows? Maybe the next Jack Hannah came from that program. We had more people go through this program last year than we've ever done in the history. But the history goes forever. Many, many years, tens of thousands of students have had the opportunity to enjoy a little taste of the Columbus Zoo. It didn't happen by accident. It happens by partnership. We wouldn't be what we are today if it wasn't for the city of Columbus, and we want to thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the partnership and for all the partnerships that you forge across the city. You know, this is one, and as you said, there are many, and that's how great, that's how your impact is as great as it is. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was also was learning that this kangaroo grows to be 150 pounds and seven feet tall?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, sorry. Six foot for males. So that is pretty crazy. All right?
So on behalf of the 11,000 animals that we have at the zoo and the 2,200 employees, we are ready for a great zoo season. Come out and visit us. We're really excited, because Dinosaur Island just opened on Saturday. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harding.
Pass.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Reamy.
All right, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Stenziano, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Reamy. All right, Councilmember Page, Councilmember Stenziano, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. I have resolutions 0155X. I am going to ask for Jalisa and Dr. Ann, who's all coming? Oh, Ann's not coming up. Ms. McLeod, come up to the podium, please. And we had the opportunity last week to open the Jubilee Marketing Cafe, but I thought it was really important for Jalisa and Ms. McLeod to come down and really talk about the cafe and the market, and how individuals can come and utilize the new facility. And so I just want to briefly read a few excerpts from the resolution, and then I'm going to let them speak. And so it's resolution to celebrate the grand opening of the Jubilee Marketing Cafe and to recognize the important new resource of affordable and healthy food for the residents of Franklinton and the city of Columbus. And whereas, on May 16th of 2018, the Lower Lights Christian Health Center opened the Jubilee Market Cafe at 1160 West Broad Street. And this market will be a nonprofit grocery store and cafe that will increase access to healthy, quality, affordable foods, including fresh fruits and vegetables, fresh meat, bread, canned goods, and nutritious daily meals for Franklinton residents and also other residents. The last comment I'll make is that this cafe is built on three strategic community pillars. First, it will serve as a catalyst for nutrition education. Second, it will promote workforce development in Franklin. And lastly, it will act as a social enterprise for the community. I'm going to move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Page, Reamy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harding.
Adopt it.
Thank you. Jalisa, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Council President Harding, President Proton Stenziano, Councilmember Tyson, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Action Plan was adopted in November of 2016, led by Columbus City Council, led by Councilmember Tyson, and by the Franklin County Board of Commissioners, under the direction of, excuse me, Commissioner John O'Grady. The Jubilee Market and Cafe embodies the plan by bringing healthy food and affordable food to the area of Franklinton, an area which is designated by the USDA as having low food access. The market also brings nutrition education, as well as counseling to shoppers, and has repurposed a vacant space into a beautiful and inviting community destination point. On behalf of the Columbus and Franklin County Local Food Board and Local Food Team, we congratulate you on this great achievement, and we thank you for continuing the work to increase healthy food, affordable food, and local food to the residents of Franklinton as well as the city of Columbus.
Good afternoon, President Harding and City Council members. My name is Tracy Cloud. I'm the interim CEO at Lower Lights Christian Health Center. We are a federally qualified health center. We serve folks at seven sites around central Ohio. We serve over 11,000 patients each year. Our health center started in Franklinton, and that is where we serve most of our patients. We recognize the need in Franklinton, in particular for our patients suffering from chronic conditions, and realize that many of the residents, especially those without transportation, don't have access to a full-service grocery store, including fresh fruits and vegetables and other healthy foods. This idea to open a grocery store in our space at Lower Lights Christian Health Center on 1160 West Broad Street started several years back. We tried to work with local partners to lease the space out to a grocery retailer with no success, and based on that, decided to take it on on our own, along with the support of our community, with support of many generous donors, including a large donation from the West Side Community Fund, which we're very grateful for. This serves many needs in Franklinton, as mentioned, not only access to healthy foods, but also to nutrition counseling. We have a full-time dietitian that works for us, that will be providing education to our customers, doing tours, helping to manage your chronic conditions. We have a discount program that offers fresh produce to people under 200% of the federal poverty level at a discounted rate up to 20%, depending on their income. We'll be accepting SNAP as well as WIC. And we're also proud to say that we're hiring locally, people from the community. Nearly all of our staff were hired, are residents of Franklinton or the West Side. In order to keep the prices low for folks that maybe can't afford to pay the higher prices, we will be doing continual fundraising, applying for grants, that kind of thing, to make sure that everyone in our community has access to healthy foods. In conclusion, just want to thank you again for your support. Many of you, some of you were there for a ribbon-cutting on Wednesday. Very much appreciate that, as well as the donations from the West Side Community Fund. Thank you.
Ms. McLeod, thank you so much. We might give you a resolution. Dr. Ann Shealy, thank you for being here. It is so important that we have this market within the Franklinton community, and since we just opened a market on the South Side and now in Franklinton, and we have other neighborhoods just clamoring to be able to have similar-type stores within their community. So we are hopeful that, as you just mentioned, that you are still, I know, in soliciting funds for your store, and so that things can continue to, one, be in operation, and be affordable. And if someone would want to donate to the Jubilee Market, what would they do?
They can contact Ann Shealy at Lower Lights Christian Health Center. We'll arrange that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so very much for your leadership, and healthy food and health goes hand-in-hand. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your support, Councilwoman Tyson.
You're welcome. I also have a group of young ladies from Eastmore Academy. If they will start walking towards the podium, please. And last Monday was the Columbus Rotary Service Above South event, and these young ladies have been involved in community service, and they were one of the four groups that were highlighted that evening, that afternoon. And they're going to come up and just really share a little bit about what their community service project was about, and it was macro-awareness of microaggressions. And a lot of people were unaware of microaggressions, and so these young ladies are going to share a little bit about their project, and then I have some certificates for them. I think Mercy Iabusi is going to be the initial speaker, and the podium is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We, from the Service Above South team from Eastmore Academy, would like to present to you today our project on microaggressions. As Councilwoman Tyson said, my name is Mercy.
I'm Soraya.
I'm Ambria.
And I'm Dacia.
And after viewing a documentary from Harvard University's Microaggression Campaign, we decided it would be a great project to show to our school community.
Microaggressions are discriminatory comments or actions towards one, due to one's race, ethnicity, size, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status. They may not always be ill-intentioned, but the slides illuminate deeper problems and biases in America. Words do matter.
With this project, we had two mingles. Our first mingle was to actually define the term "microaggression," so everyone knew exactly what they were. Some popular terms of microaggression are, "You're pretty." "You're very pretty for a dark-skinned girl."
Or "That's so gay."
"You're so outspoken."
Or "That's so retarded."
Another, our other goal for this project was to actually inform our school community on how a microaggression can impact an individual, both mentally and physically.
The results of our student body survey not only show that students now not only understand the term "microaggressions," they're also able to identify the different kinds and combat them daily. Our teachers also use this information to spark up daily conversations and change our school atmosphere.
Before I started working on this project, I had never even heard the term. But now, not only do I understand the term, I have reduced my use of microaggressions, and I speak up when others are committing microaggressions.
After learning what the word "microaggressions" meant, it has changed me and my peers to now understand what we say and how we say things towards our other peers.
Thank you for your time.
Don't walk away. So don't walk away. Can you, again, say each of your names and what grade you're in?
I'm Soraya, and I am a freshman.
I'm Mercy, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Ambria, and I am a freshman.
I'm Dacia, and I'm a freshman.
Now, we should be, I mean, four young ladies, Eastmore Academy, freshmen, freshmen, that have focused on an issue that all of us need to think about and look at our lives differently. But I'm so impressed with these four young women, there are other people that are part of their team, too, that just are not here today, but for four young women to be focused on issues about, well, the microaggressions, to help, to educate their school, to change the culture of their school, is really significant. And so I thank you for your leadership, and it just shows that our future is bright because of young women like yourselves. Thank you so much, and I'm going to have, I'm going to give each of you a certificate. Thank you. And just lastly, I just want to mention the Community Health Day at the Ohio State University Wexler Medical Center at Carepoint East will be June the 2nd, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Carepoint East, 543 Taylor Avenue. You have, the checkups are free, private health screenings, including blood pressure, blood sugar, stroke, podiatry, foot care, vision, hearing, dental, breast, prostate, lung, kidney, sports, physicals, and general consultations. And there'll be, it'll be a lot of fun, free food, giveaways, and entertainment.
But I'm so impressed with these four young women, there are other people that are part of their team too that just are not here today, but for four young women to be focused on issues about, well, the microaggressions, to help, to educate their school, to change the culture of their school, is really significant. And so I thank you for your leadership, and it just shows that our future is bright because of young women like yourselves. Thank you so much, and I'm gonna have, I'm gonna give each of you a certificate. Thank you. And just lastly, I just want to mention the Community Health Day at the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center at Carepoint East will be June the 2nd from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Carepoint East, 543 Taylor Avenue. You have, the checkups are free, private health screenings, including blood pressure, blood sugar, stroke, podiatry, foot care, vision, hearing, dental, breast, prostate, lung, kidney, sports, physicals, and general consultations. And there'll be, it'll be a lot of fun, free food, giveaways, and entertainment, line dancing, yoga, face painting, bring the kids, come out and get some, and get health checks. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Tonight, I have actually, I have two resolutions. The first resolution is 0159X-2018 to honor and recognize the first-place winners of the 2018 Special Olympic State Basketball Tournament. Would the state basketball champs come forward, please? Earlier this year, a group of Columbus students won the Special Olympic State Basketball Tournament. These athletes went eight and one this season and beat Wes Lick in overtime to make it to the state finals. What's most incredible about this group is that they were originally two separate teams. However, they came together, learned how to play as a unit, and ended up beating Richland County for the state title. Tonight, we're lucky enough, lucky enough to have not just a great basketball team with us, but also the three of the athletes and one coach from Columbus Schools Special Olympics, who will be traveling to Seattle to participate in the U.S. Games. Specifically, want to congratulate Eric, Aaron, and Niles, who are going to go to Seattle to represent us, but certainly, thank you to the, and congratulations to the entire team. I had a chance to meet these folks outside, these young men. They are not just great athletes, but they are brilliant. Talking to Julian, who told me that he is already working on a monorail system for the city of Columbus, and I told him for Columbus to continue to grow, we need high-capacity transit, so I was very, very impressed. Quickly, guys, would you give us just your name, and your name, so that everyone knows who you are? We're so proud of you. Sorry, again, with you, you can come to the mic really quickly. I'm sorry.
Hello, my name is Jalen Nichols.
Congratulations, Jalen. Nice to meet you, Preston. Congratulations.
My name is Julian Ackerman.
Nice to meet you, Julian. Congratulations.
My name is Jaleel Nichols DeBosso.
Congratulations, sir.
My name is Jayden Gregskent.
Congratulations, Jalen.
My name is Jalen Gregskent.
My name is Ben.
Congratulations, Ben.
My name is Malcolm Battle.
My name is Cordell.
Congratulations, Cordell.
My name is Michael.
All right, congratulations. And these three gentlemen are the ones, are gonna go and represent us in Seattle. Can you come, give your name?
My name is Ann Von Driscoll, and I'm going for bocce.
All right.
My name is Niles Dow, and I'm going to Seattle for powerlifting.
All right.
My name is Eric Gates, and I'm going to Seattle for softball.
All right. Congratulations to each and every one of the... Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing that I may have a motion to pass, or a second, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. And I want to just congratulate all those folks, the coaches, and Ms. Julie, and everyone who worked so hard with this team. We really, really are proud of their work and their accomplishments. Lastly, but certainly not least, I'd like to recognize and invite up some of our city's best, our 40 Under 40 folks who are honored this week. 40 Under 40 is in its 26th year and recognizes the young difference-makers of our community. Each year, Columbus Business First chooses 40 young honorees based on their outstanding career achievements and community service. In March, they received more than 300 nominations and a record 300, or 220, 36 applications. From the hundreds, Columbus Business First selected 40 outstanding individuals from our community. The class of 2018 is made up of CEOs, doctors, lawyers, professors, and public servants. It is a diverse representation of the best of our community. Before us tonight is a sample of that group. From Columbus City Council, thank you for your ideas you have amongst us and council member, or present pro tem Stenziano. Your collective leadership is, I was like, is that correct? Your collective leadership is what keep Columbus headed in the right direction. We are so, so proud of the work that you're doing each and every day. When we think of Columbus of the future, we look to you and our, your peers and partners and fully supportive of the work of moving our community forward. If you would quickly just say who you are and the organization you represent. Starting...
Charles Hill, Vice President of Strategic Development for Experience Columbus.
Suzie Bureau, founder of Give Back Hack and Cover My Matters, at Cover My Matters.
Alessandro Chifanchini, VP Accounts Director at Orgo Branding Company.
Dr. Chanel Jones, Lead Faculty of Criminal Justice Administration, Franklin University.
Lindsay Fordella, Senior Associate Counsel for Central Ohio Transit Authority.
Dr. Deandra Moll, Dean of Students and Assistant Vice President for Student Life at the Ohio State University.
Betsy Pandora, Executive Director of the Short North Alliance.
Michael Corey, Executive Director of the Human Service Chamber of Franklin County.
Josh Harrison, President of Improving.
Diana Pagan, Manager of Inclusion and Community Development, Columbus Association for the Performing Arts.
Steve Nogan, Facial Plastic and Reconstructive Surgeon at the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center.
Frank Sasso, President of Kaufman Development.
Congratulations to this sample of the amazing young people, 40 Under 40, for the city of Columbus. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Congratulations. Are there any comments by our elected officials or members of the administration, city auditor, city attorney, city treasurer? I see that we have the Greater Southeast Area Commission with us this evening. Welcome to council. At this time, I request the following resolution be removed from the consent agenda, Resolution 0155X-2018. Are there any other ordinances or resolutions to be removed from the agenda? Seeing none, may I now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance Committee Ordinance is 1164, 1229, 1254-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 125X-2018. Ordinance 1364-2018. Technology Committee Ordinance 1293-2018. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 403, 1158, 1209, 1219, 1245, 1263, 1294, and 1305-2018.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions, and will be, will the clerk now read those ordinance numbers for, into the record?
Resolution of Expression 156X-2018, 158X, and 160X-2018. Finance Committee Ordinance is 1169, 1170, 1198, 1295, 1324, 1334, 1335, 1349, 1350, 1360, 1368-2018. Recreation and Parks Committee Ordinance is 1214 and 1216-2018. Ordinance is 1282 and 1344-2018. Public Safety Committee Ordinance is 1082, 1379-2018. Public Service and Transportation Committee Ordinance is 1083, 1185, 1269, 1274, 1287, 1297, 1304, 1314, 1322, 1333-2018. Administration Committee Ordinance 1256-2018. Economic Development and Small Business Committee Resolution 153X, 157X-2018. Ordinance is 1326, 1327, and 1469-2018. Housing Committee Ordinance 1312-2018. Judiciary and Court Administration Committee Ordinance 410-2018. Technology Committee Ordinance is 1159, 1199, 1240-2018. Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 997, 1172, 1202, 1208, and 1345-2018. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0128, 129, 130, 131, 133, 134, 135, 136, 137, and 138-2018.
Seeing no speakers on our consent agenda or first reading, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions? Clerk, would you call the roll by voice, please?
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Stenziano?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
President Harden?
Yes, consent agenda items are passed, with the noted exceptions. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Elizabeth Brown is chair. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in finance, we have ordinance 1323-2018 to authorize the mayor or the director of financing management to execute and deliver on behalf of the city a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority and Franklin County pertaining to the construction of a convention center hotel expansion. This MOU represents the first step in an ongoing collaboration between the city, county, and Convention Facilities Authority for the expansion of the Convention Center Hotel. The MOU does not create a new financial obligation for the city, but will allow the CFA to move forward with planning and design of the project. Any financial obligations for the city will be considered by city council under separate ordinances at a future date or dates. I would like to turn the microphone over to Director Lombardi to comment further, as you'd like, and to talk more about the project in detail.
Sure, thank you, President Harden, Finance Chair Brown, members of council. This ordinance simply allows the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority. And Franklin County, as you indicated, is a first step toward an agreement that will ultimately support the financing of a convention center hotel expansion to be built by the CFA. The MOU is non-binding, and will allow the convention facility to start the process of designing and constructing the new hotel, and will assure that the project remains on schedule. The administration will continue to work with the city auditor, bond council for the city and the CFA and our partners at Franklin County to define the terms and conditions of the final financial agreement. The administration will present separate legislation for council's consideration once a final agreement is complete. The expansion hotel will allow for a net result of 1,000 full-service hotel rooms that will allow the city to attract larger national and international events and conventions. It will also allow Columbus to build on its momentum from recent successes such as the 2008 NCAA Women's Final Four, and then leverage our investment in the upcoming ASAE Conference to be held in Columbus in 2019. Since the opening of the downtown Hilton, bed tax revenues have increased at a rapid pace. These dollars help promote travel and tourism, but they also provide critical support to our community, such as the arts, affordable housing, and human services. This hotel expansion will continue to advance Columbus as a convention destination, and the new revenue will continue to strengthen our Columbus neighborhoods. I appreciate your support and ongoing partnership as we work in collaboration with the CFA and Franklin County. I would, I would be happy to take any questions that any council members may have.
Thank you. Other questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Chair Brown. So this is, again, a non-binding agreement, correct? Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Tyson. It is non-binding.
Thank you. And then when, and you'll be coming back to us for additional legislation, and what's the timeframe?
President Harden, Councilmember Tyson, and other members of council, right now we are continuing to work with the city auditor and the bond council and the CFA and Franklin County to come up with a final agreement. I don't have a specific timeframe at which we will come back with a, another ordinance for that consideration by council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And I have one further ordinance in Recreation and Parks.
Please.
Thank you. In Recreation and Parks, we have ordinance 1075-2018 to authorize the director of Recreation and Parks to enter into contract with the Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio to provide summer youth programming from May 2018 through August 2018, to authorize the expenditure of $130,000 from the Recreation and Parks Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. The Workforce Development Board of Central Ohio has directed a summer youth employment program with the city for the past two years. They have established programs with organizations such as the PAST Foundation, Franklin Park Conservatory, and Diversified Systems. Applicants will also be placed within city departments. This employment program is in addition to the APPS Job Readiness Program, which is also administered through Recreation and Parks. Director Collins, thank you for your hard work in leadership of this, and do you have anything to add regarding that collaboration with the Workforce Development Board?
Councilmember Brown, President Harden, members of council, thank you very much for considering this ordinance this evening. This is a part of our overall strategy in employment for kids 14 to 24 in the city of Columbus. In addition to the 700 traditional summer youth employment opportunities the Recreation and Parks offers, as you mentioned, we have the additional 100 that we've added this year through our APPS Jobs Workforce Program within CRPD. And this additional 50 positions in partnership workforce development will target kids in the foster system, and income-eligible kids in the foster system. So we're really excited to be able to reach out to another group of targeted kids that need service and need connected to workforce opportunity and workforce development. I do want to say two things. I want to say thank you to Director Brandon and the Human Resources Team, because they are administering and facilitating the city side of the placement, which is a lot of work and takes a lot of effort from their team, and they've been incredibly helpful. Also, to the directors and the departments that will host the kids, because getting the opportunity to participate in the program really culminates with an opportunity to learn from staff, professional staff, and in our different departments throughout the city, and potentially see opportunities for their future as well. So all of it's a team effort and part of the overall comprehensive effort through the city to find a place for kids to work during the summer, give them job training and skills that will help them down the road.
Great. Thank you so much, Director Collins and Director Brandon. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have in my committee, is President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, we have ordinance 1378-2018 to authorize the director of Public Safety to modify and extend the contract with Columbus Towing and Recovery LLC for the general fund, for the Division of Police, to authorize the expenditure of $1,450,000 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. Director speaks. Would you speak to the rationale for the extension, please?
Chairman Brown, President Harden, members of council, the purpose of this contract is to extend our towing services with the current vendor. The contract has been in effect for several years. This extension will be under the same terms and conditions as the present contract. The reason for the extension, if...
The reason for the extension is that the bid for towing services is currently in litigation in the Court of Common Pleas. Public Safety recommends approval of this extension under the same terms and conditions which will allow us time to resolve the bidding dispute.
Thank you, Director speaks. If there are no comments, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all we have in public safety, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Emmanuel Remy. Emmanuel, the Councilmember Remy, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight I have ordinance number 1224-2018 to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Water General Obligation Bond Fund and the Storm Recovery Zone Superbuild America Bond Fund to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, the Water General Obligations Bond Fund, and the Storm Recovery Zone Superbuild America Bond Fund to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Danbert Inc. for the UIRF Northeast Donlight Curbs and Sidewalks Project to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,947,054.53 to pay for the project and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Danbert Inc. for the UIRF Northeast Donlight Curbs and Sidewalk Project and to provide payment for construction, construction administration, and inspection services. This project includes replacement of existing pavement on Donlight Avenue using chemical stabilization of the subbase and new flexible pavement, installation of new curb, curb ramps, sidewalk, and storm sewer within the existing right-of-way, replacement of an existing eight-inch water main on Donlight Avenue, and installation of sidewalk connecting the two termini at the intersections of Woodland Avenue at Minnesota Avenue and Woodland Avenue at Myrtle Avenue. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
With your permission, President Harden, that's all I have this evening in public safety. I'd like to move on to rules and regulation, rules and reference, excuse me.
Please.
Thank you very much. Tonight we have ordinance number 1189-2018 to enact and amend various sections of Title II Administrative Code and Title XXI Traffic Code of the Columbus City Codes to establish the Division of Parking Services and to further define and clarify parking and car-sharing rules and regulations. This ordinance will establish the Division of Parking Services within the Department of Public Service. It also further defines and clarifies parking and car-sharing rules and regulations and establishes three new parking infraction fines. The clarifications of the rules and regulations along with the implementing the new parking infraction fines are to be effective as 30-day legislation. The establishment of the Division of Parking Services is not effective until December 16, 2018. A few key points to highlight are the creation of a new Division of Parking Services as aforementioned, car share and increasing mobility options throughout the city, permit parking, and creating a benefit, the opportunity to create benefit districts throughout the city, and then, of course, updating the definitions of that code. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues on this? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Economic Development and Small Business Committee. Councilmember Jaisa Page is chair. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. This evening in Economic Development and Small Business, I would like to first read ordinance 1355-2018.
Please.
To authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a downtown office incentive agreement with IBOT Company Incorporated and to declare an emergency. The primary line of business for Root Insurance Company, which is headquartered here in Columbus, is providing property and casualty insurance, in particular, personal passenger auto insurance. Root is a subsidiary of IBOT Company, which was founded in 2015. IBOT Company intends to lease, renovate, and occupy approximately 65,000 square feet of office space at 80 East Rich Street near the Columbus Commons. The expansion of the company's headquarters and growth of their executive and customer support operation will support projected growth and provide access to a diverse and talented pool of prospective employees. Tonight we have Mr. Alex Timm, co-founder and CEO of Root Insurance with us. Mr. Timm, if you could please come down to the podium and share comments with us, and thank you for joining us this evening.
So thank you for the introduction and giving an overview of Root. As you guys know, we are a new insurance company, and I have good news for you guys today. I don't have a penguin, but I do have good news. It's working. We're growing remarkably fast, and this is incredibly important for Columbus. I think, as we know, technology is coming. It is changing the landscape, and we can be first in this, in a lot of these changes. And Root is part of that. We are based on artificial intelligence, modern engineering, and modern technology. We are bringing jobs to Columbus. I actually am a Columbus native. I grew up in Columbus. I live in Wyandham Park now, and I want to keep the company in Columbus. Part of that is the support of the city. We're bringing roughly 500 new jobs to the city in the next two, three years, and we want to make sure that those stay in Columbus again. So that's why these incentives are so important to us. We think it's important for Columbus to support technology and to support the future, and we want to be a strong part of that.
Thank you so much, Mr. Timm. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you for joining us this evening. Director, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Page. I just want to thank Mr. Timm and also echo what he said. I mean, this is part of our longer-term strategy. This is why we pay attention to our growing companies. This is why we make sure that we're attracting venture capital to the city. I also want to point out that the Gay Street corridor is going to get a lot more quiet. We moved out of our building there. We're right next door, so we're going to be looking to try and fill that space up as quickly as we can.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Director, and thank you, Gay, Mr. Timm. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage. By voice.
Please call the roll by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Page?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, with the notable, yeah, pass.
Thank you, President Harden, for that. I would now like to go back to ordinance 1268-2018 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Airside Four LLC for a property tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years on real property improvements in consideration of a proposed total investment of approximately $4,500,000. Airside Four LLC expects to invest this amount at the project site on Bridgeway Avenue in order to construct the office and distribution center. It is estimated that the new development will support the creation of 10 net new full-time permanent positions to the city of Columbus with an associated new annual payroll of approximately $350,000. As this is expected to develop, the exact number of full-time permanent positions expected to be relocated to this site is still unknown. The Department of Development recommends an enterprise zone property tax abatement of 75% for a period of 10 consecutive years on real property improvements for the purpose of constructing a new office and distribution center. Director Shoney, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. We do have a speaker speaking against this ordinance, Mr. Joe Motill. Welcome to council, and you have three minutes. If you could please let us know any organizations that you are representing.
President Harden, Chairwoman Page, members of city council, Joe Motill. I live at 167 West Cook Road in Columbus. Well, one week and $4.2 million later, here we are again, continuing with the mayor and city councils 2018 taxpayer spring giveaway with a proposed loss of $855,000 in property tax revenue. But this, of course, is a much better deal than last week's $3.5 million tax abatement because this speculative distribution center is going to double the number of full-time jobs from five last week to a whooping 10 this week, all while increasing our city's annual income tax revenues from last week's five jobs that would bring in 3,900 to 10 jobs this week at $8,750. So the annual city income tax brought in by these 15 jobs comes to about $12,650. This isn't even enough to cover a one-month salary for our mayor but provides for an $86,000 annual handout to Airside slash the Damlers Group. And just like last week, this distribution center will benefit from being constructed at a prized location for success while being located nearly at the front door of the John Glenn International Airport. And just as last week, and typical of tax abatements that are given away by the city council, this is yet another tax abatement to an affluent real estate developer who has made hundreds of millions of dollars over the past 35 years in Central Ohio and elsewhere. The Damlers Group is, and I quote, consistently recognizes one of the leading commercial real estate developers and construction managers in Central Ohio. Damlers has constructed more space over the last 10 years than any other developer. Hardly a company that has experienced financial collapse and in need of another tax break to build another warehouse, don't you think? Or maybe this tax abatement is just another way of saying thank you to the corporate executives of the Damlers Group slash Airside Four LLC for their continued generosity and campaign contributions of $6,500 to Mayor Ginther and President Harden just over the last few years. On top of $15,000, they contributed to the 2016 One Columbus Campaign Committee that helped to make sure the structure of this city council remained intact so not to disrupt the mayor and the city council's policies on tax abatements in order to keep the development community happy and those campaign contributions flowing in. And not only is the Damlers Group benefiting from a 15-year, 100% real estate tax abatement at its 80 on the Commons project that boasts 120 high-end residential apartment units, and by the way, zero workforce housing units, but Airside Four also received a $1.2 million tax abatement in January of 2017 for a property which is in direct proximity to the project that is being proposed this evening. I would very much like to hear somebody on this city council justify this tax abatement to myself and to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Motill. Are there any questions or comments from Mr. Motill? Thank you. Director Shoney?
Thank you, Chair Page, President Harden, members of council. Just a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Motill did point out the 80 on the Commons site. That is actually where Root Insurance is going to go. And just to reiterate, I think the annual payroll for that project is going to be about $38.8 million. When he talks about why do you do speculative projects that only show five jobs when you come in, clearly, Airside One is not going to be that. It's a different kind of project, or Airside Two. Airside One, if you look at it now, is the home of homage. Be happy to get council some data on the other projects that have gone into the prior Airside project to show the kind of value that we see out of that. The other thing that I would point out is that when we look at these investments, this is not only, these are long-term investments. The city is not giving up any current revenue. The schools are not giving up any current revenue, and when you take a 20-year time horizon at the revenue that this is going to generate, in this case for Gehanna Lincoln Schools, it's about a $2.1 million increase in revenue for Gehanna Lincoln Schools. So be happy to answer any further questions from the members of council.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 1352-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development on behalf of the city to enter into a tax increment financing agreement with White Castle Management Incorporated to provide for the construction and financing of public infrastructure improvements within and around the tax increment financing area created by ordinance 1105-2018 and to declare an emergency. This council passed ordinance 1105-2018 on May 7, 2018, establishing a tax increment financing area known as the West Goodell Tiff Benefiting Parcels located at 555 West Goodell. This ordinance approves and authorizes a tax increment financing agreement between the city of Columbus and White Castle Management to provide for the construction and financing of certain improvements to the parcels. Are there any questions or comments? Any comments from Director?
No.
Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 1459-2018 to authorize the Director of the Office of Diversity and Inclusion to enter into contract with the Workforce Development Board and supported the LEADUS Program to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund and to declare an emergency. The LEADUS Program, which is Leaders in Education to Advance a Diverse Columbus, is a summer youth enrichment program which aims to serve 30 Columbus youth from diverse backgrounds in neighborhoods across the capital city. And this is another opportunity for our young people to be employed throughout the summer in addition to the ordinance that we passed under the leadership of Councilmember Elizabeth Brown. The program goals are to encourage participants to be productive citizens, increase workforce development skills, and create an environment that fosters positive mentorship. The summer youth program will not only introduce students to meaningful careers within the city but will also allow for hands-on experience. And this is a five-week program that will allow for shadowing at least one day of the week and attending different sessions, including dress for success, are you being too social, and interviewing skills. Are there any questions or comments? President Harden?
Chair, just want to applaud you for your work on this ordinance. This, as we think about and as we approach summer and think about keeping our young people and our communities safe, one of the things I think that we can all agree on is that a working young person is a safer young person and creates a safer community. So your additional work to get more young people on a track and pipeline and closer connected with the 9,000 employees and employment opportunities that we have with the city of Columbus is greatly appreciated and looking forward to this program and working and supporting you in the Office of Diversity and Inclusion in this work. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, President Harden. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Ordinance 1465-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into an agreement with the Capitol Crossroads Special Improvement District of Columbus, known as Capitol Crossroads CID, to participate in the Downtown CPAS Program, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Capitol South Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $112,845 within the general fund, the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, the Development Service Fund, and the Capitol South Fund, and to declare an emergency. Director, do you have any additional comments?
Thank you, Chair Page, President Harden, members of council. We're really excited about this. I hope everyone has caught some of the news about the CPAS Program. This is an opportunity for every employee in a building located within the downtown CID to have a free CODA pass. That includes you. I hope that all of you will sign up. I think you may have gotten an email from Director Brandon on Friday asking you to fill out a survey, so I hope you all filled it out and affirmatively said that you were interested in participating. I want to take the time to thank especially two of my colleagues. Director Lombardi and Director Brandon have been great partners in working with us to see that this is implemented, but this is a program that's getting national attention in terms of how to fund and increase participation in transit, so we're excited about it and hope that you all will be signing up on or about June 1st for your free CODA pass.
Thank you, Director. Are there any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Page, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
President Harden, if I may move to the Housing Committee?
Please.
Thank you. We have ordinance 1276-2018, of which I am co-sponsoring with President Potem Stenziano, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into agreements to provide funding for various approved housing programs that will assist first-time home buyers and for-profit and nonprofit organizations with grants and no or low-interest loans for projects designed to increase and preserve the local supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing for low and moderate-income families, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $900,000 from the 2014 Home Fund to the Department of Development and to declare an emergency. I first like to offer the floor to President Potem Stenziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the title says it all, but really interested in kind of how this home program is being, serves as the largest federal block grant to state and local governments designed exclusively to create affordable housing for low-income households. This program and the partners provides formally grants to states and cities like ours in partnership with local nonprofits usually to fund a wide range of activities including building buying and/or rehabilitating affordable housing for rent or homeownership. And I think we all know how important that is. So thank you, Director, and your department for your ongoing work in this area, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, President Potem Stenziano. Director, do you have any additional comments?
No, thank you very much for leading the charge on this.
We do have one speaker. We do have one speaker this evening speaking for this ordinance, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Welcome to council, may come down to the podium, and if you could let us know any organizations that you are representing, and you have three minutes.
You're chairman of Minnesota, vacant property and north lending area. My name is Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. I just want to say thank you to you. Would just like to see more money up to $985,203, and I just want to say thank you for all your hard work in this. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, and thank you for speaking in support of this ordinance. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
1277-2018 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into contract with Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority for the Poindexter Village Phase III Retention-Detention Facility Project and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $500,000 from the 2017 Community Development Block Grant and to declare an emergency. The Columbus Metropolitan Housing Authority is undertaking a $250 million multi-phase redevelopment of the Poindexter Village area. In June of 2014, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development awarded CMHA $30 million of the Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant to facilitate the redevelopment. And the city of Columbus continues to provide home, community development block grant funds, and capital funds to assist with the redevelopment effort, and this ordinance provides CDBG funds specifically for the retention and detention ponds. There are no further questions or comments? I move for passage by voice.
Chair, you have to take it from the table.
I apologize. I would first like to remove it from the table by...
Please call the row. By voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, remove from table.
I now move for passage by voice.
Please call the row.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Remy?
Yes.
Stenziano?
Yes.
Tyson?
I'm staying.
President Harden?
Yes, pass.
Thank you, President Harden, and if I may move to Judiciary and Court Administration?
Please.
0408-2018 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Municipal Court Clerk to enter into a contract with the Genesis Telecommunications Laboratories Incorporated for the provision of the VoIP gateways and support services for the Municipal Court Clerk phone system to waive the competitive provisions of Chapter 329 Columbus City Codes to authorize the expenditure of $224,000, sorry, $449.78 from the Municipal Court Clerk Capital Improvement Funds and to declare an emergency. I do not see anyone here from the court this evening. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And ordinance 1211-2018 to authorize and direct the city attorney to settle the claims of DeMarco DeShawn Anderson, to authorize the expenditure of the sum of $30,000 in settlement of these claims and to declare an emergency. City Attorney Klein?
Thank you, Chair Page, President Harden, and members of council. On April 8th, 2017, Columbus Police were called to a house on Mays Road on a report that a man later identified as DeMarco Anderson was threatening to shoot people with a weapon. While officers were responding to the location, dispatchers aired that they had also received calls that shots had been fired. The initial responding officer tried to take Mr. Anderson into custody, but he resisted arrest and ran away with a handgun in his waistband. He eventually tripped and fell to the ground. Officers converged, including Officer Zachary Rosen, who used force on Mr. Anderson. I believe council is fully aware of this incident and the subsequent resulting disciplinary process involving Officer Rosen. This resolution results from the use of that force. Payment of $30,000 is a fair resolution of this matter for all parties, and that includes the city and Mr. Anderson. It's in the best interest of the city to resolve this matter to avoid extended litigation and the risk of damages and attorney's fees. Additionally, because of a potential conflict of interest between the city and the officer involved, the city may have had to hire outside counsel, and by resolving this issue now, the city also avoids paying outside counsel fees. Mr. Anderson and the city have agreed to this resolution, and we ask that council approve the ordinance. Be happy to take any questions, Chair.
Thank you, City Attorney Klein. Are there any additional questions? I do have one question. I assume that once this settlement, if it passes this evening, will Mr. Anderson agree to dismiss the claims against the city of Columbus?
This resolution is in lieu of litigation and charges, or I'm sorry, not charges, but a suit filed by Mr. Anderson. So, the claims would be over from this, resulting from this use of force.
Thank you. If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And that's all I have this evening, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Page. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. President Potem Stenziano is chair of the committee. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in Public Utilities, bring forward ordinance 1237-2018 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Darby Creek Excavating Incorporated for the Arcadia Avenue Area Waterline Improvements Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $3,874,250.49 from the Water Systems Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize the appropriation expenditure of $3,874,250.49 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize a transfer and expenditure of $34,500 within the Water General Obligations Bond Fund for the Division of Water, and to authorize an amendment to the 2018 Capital Improvements Budget and declare an emergency. The purpose of this project is to construct necessary improvements to the water distribution system in the Arcadia Avenue area. Replacement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease burden on water maintenance operations, and reduce water loss. It is requested that this ordinance be handled in an emergency manner in order to meet the project timeline and to allow our Department of Public Service to begin roadwork as soon as possible. This was a great example of the two departments working together and servicing while we're there, let's do this and get it done. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
It's all we have in Public Utilities this evening.
Thank you, Chair Stenziano. The final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have ordinance 1301-2018. It is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Hologenic GenPro for the purchase of Chlamydia and Gonorrhea Test Kits for Columbus Public Health in accordance with the sole source provisions of the city code, and to authorize expenditure of $100,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund. In 2017, the rate of chlamydia in Franklin County was 722.6 per 100,000 people, which is 60%, 60% higher than the rate in Ohio. The rate of gonorrhea in Franklin County is 331.1 per 100,000, which is about 80% higher than the rate of Ohio, in Ohio. Now, I know this is not something that people want to talk about, but sexually transmitted diseases in our community is a real concern, is significant concern. And when you think about, this is for those two diseases, but certainly syphilis, primary and secondary, and this is for African-Americans, it's three times higher, and for males, seven times higher. Chlamydia, six times higher for African-Americans, and for females, two times higher. It is an issue in our community, and Columbus Public Health certainly is providing information in regards to trying to provide education, provide services to individuals. So, they have a women's health and wellness center at Columbus Public Health that you certainly can get testing and treatment for sexually transmitted diseases and infections. There's a teen health clinic at Columbus Public Health for 13- to 19-year-olds every Tuesday from 3:00 to 6:00. And there's a women's health and teen health clinics that work primarily, again, with Columbus Public Health programs, for the Youth Wellness Initiative, the Sexual Health Clinic, the Take Care Down There Initiative, Partner Services, PrEP, and Hep C Linkages to Care. They also work externally with Equitized Health for transgender care and for PrEP. So, for parents in this community who certainly may not believe that your children are sexually active, you need to provide some sexual education to our young people. For adults, certainly, think about protecting yourself from these diseases. And I'm happy to pass this legislation so people can get the proper testing, but we certainly need to do more than just the testing. We need to provide more education and reach people where they are so that we can, don't continue to have these, these numbers of individuals who are continuing to contract these sexually transmitted diseases, and maybe they, I mean, don't use protection because they feel like these can be treated, but again, we need to deal with this issue in our community, and so I'm happy to pass this legislation today, and again, think prevention is key. Prevention is key. I move for passage of my legislation.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Chair Tyson, and thank you for your leadership on that issue and many others. So, thank you. That is all we have to come before council. I did want to recognize Mr. Dean Smith, who is here shadowing our auditor, Megan Kilgore. Dean is an undergraduate at OSU studying city planning and finances and is also a member of the National Guard. Thank you and welcome to council.
Seeing no further business, can I get a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Paige, Remy, Stenziano, Tyson, President Harden.
We stand adjourned. We'll take non-adj进了 speakers momentarily.